... to order Tuesday, July 21st, 2015. Counselor Dina Tally, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
President Hay.
Here.
Counselor Bean.
President.
Counselor Boishman.
President.
Counselor Bezo.
President.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Joseph.
Here.
Counselor Caddy. Counselor Kusmerik. Counselor Tran.
Yep.
We will now have the public forum. Anybody wishing to speak on any item on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are addressing a public hearing petition, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Anybody wish to speak? If so, approach Senate table, identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda you are addressing. Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Fitchburg City Council, my name is Don Long. I live at Purple Hill Road in Fitchburg. I am the pastor of Faith Christian Church on Bowtel Street at the site of Fitchburg's former historic Jewish synagogue, and I rise to speak to the Agenda Item 155-15, a resolution I have submitted regarding the restoration of the flag of Israel to our community. I won't read the resolutions; that would consume my two minutes. Until last year, the flag of Israel was part of the international flags flying in the center of our city. On our many visits to Israel over the past ten years, we have told Israelis about our city of Fitchburg and their flag being displayed here. This has given them great encouragement and hope. Fitchburg has a long history of good relations with the resident Jewish community. Many of you may remember Rogers in the Square or Miller's Grocery Store, Barney Rosen's Clothing Store, or Rome's Insurance. As early as 1900, much of the Jewish community lived in the Bowtel Street neighborhood. In 2003, when our congregation purchased the synagogue, we did so with the commitment to the Jewish community to keep alive the heritage involved in their building on Bowtel Street. In the resolution, I call attention to many presidents, both Republican and Democrat, who have spoken highly of the nation's excellent relationship with Israel. I have referenced Governor DeVal's memorandum of economic understanding and cooperation between Israel and Massachusetts. Further references made to the fact that of the sixty-five Israeli-American sister cities, three of them are found in Massachusetts. I was told last year, when the flag did not appear, that it was the result of a random selection that it was not there and instead the United Nations' flag was flying. This spring, the same apparent random selection seems to have occurred. I would remind the City Council that the United Nations is not a nation, and furthermore, is a deliberative body in the world. It is decidedly anti-Semitic and anti-Israel, which obviously do not reflect our sentiments as a city. Therefore, I am not just interested in issuing a complaint or just to correct it, I would ask that the City Council go on record that the flag of Israel represents a selection or a section of citizens of Fitchburg who are very much a part of our history, and therefore that the flag of Israel should be a regular part of our international display of flags in our city. I and the twenty-five members or so of our congregation who are present tonight urge you to unanimously pass Resolution 155-15. Thank you much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Michael, excuse me, my name is Michael Ward, and I live at 15 Sassen Street in Lamisa. I appeared before this committee last year, and I'd like to follow up on some of the events I've tried to accomplish during this past year in order to be sure that all the dates and quotes I have are accurate. I simply would rather just read this instead of looking up and trying to make eye contact. On July 16th of 2014, the Animal Control Officer approved behavioral experts from Family Animal Rescue League of Boston to evaluate two particular dogs I had bonded with. These experts recommended one dog be made available for adoption. Inspired that, the Animal Control Officer had that dog killed. The other dog was recommended for euthanization based on a false history the experts were given. They were told that the dog attacked and killed another dog while being walked in the street, not true. Ms. Carvalesi could not even speak with the only individual who witnessed the entire altercation. How can she file an official, accurate report without even speaking with the only person who saw the entire event? To make matters worse, the evaluations occurred on July 16th. Ms. Carvalesi kept the dogs in orbit for a total of seventy-six days, not in a shelter, but in the town's DPW facility. She had them returned to Fitchburg on September 10th and had them killed the very same day. On August 29th, a colleague and I, who was here this evening, visited Deputy Bezakis and attempted to obtain information on these dogs. He refused to answer a single question. Out of frustration, I simply asked, "Sir, are these dogs alive?" I was told to return in two weeks for my answer. Well, I did return in two weeks, and he would not even come out of his office to speak with me. On November 30th of 2014, a stray dog, Mariah, and her five pups were found on the side of the road. The ACO contacted Animal Rescue Connection and asked for help with them. Animal Rescue Connection is a group of volunteers who specialize in rehabilitating at-risk dogs. Since 2012, they have assisted over three-hundred-and-fifty dogs to move into adopted loving homes. On December 19th, Ms. Carvalesi emailed Kristen Vance, a representative of this organization, asking for help on evaluating Mariah. Ms. Vance emailed on December 21st stating that an evaluation could be done the following week. Other emails were sent to Ms. Carvalesi to set up a definite date. She did not respond to any of these emails. On January 3rd, another networking group of animal advocates told Animal Rescue Connection that Ms. Carvalesi had decided to euthanize Mariah and another dog. The other dog was named Frankie or Coco. The next day, Ms. Carvalesi spoke to Ms. Vance of ARC and said that no decision had been made on euthanizing the dogs. That conversation took place on January 4th. However, I have impound reports indicating that Frankie had been killed at Twin City Animal Hospital on January 3rd, the day before that conversation took place. I requested information from Ms. Carvalesi on this dog, but received none. By the way, the Animal Control Officer herself describes this dog as, I quote, "a six-to-nine-month-old hyper-friendly puppy," unquote. I believe the folks in the city might be interested in being told why the ACO is killing hyper-friendly puppies. ARC, Animal Rescue Connection, agreed to sign a waiver of liability if the city would surrender Mariah to them. They refused. After sixty-six days, Mariah was killed by the ACO. Mariah had five puppies. I asked Ms. Carvalesi what happened to them. I never received an answer. If there was a happy ending, she would have told me, so I must believe the ending was not pleasant. Speaking of the number five, during a time period of last year, I have paperwork from the ACO indicating that she transferred five dogs through other shelters in central Mass. I contacted these shelters, and they indicated to me that they did not receive any dogs from Fitchburg. Dogs will not just disappear. What happened to them? The mayor was then contacted. She directed all inquiries to Officer Bezakis. However, he has stated in no uncertain terms that he does not have time to talk and that all questions should be emailed to him. Unfortunately, he does not respond to emails. He will not take phone calls, he will not respond to emails, he will not see me after he made an appointment to see me. How do you contact this, gentlemen? Now I want to share what I believe are instances where Ms. Carvalesi violated the public right to know law. This law provides every person has a right of access to public information. This right of access includes the right to respect, copy, or have copies of records provided. The custodian must be spawned without unreasonable delay and within ten calendar days. The law also states that if a city officer refuses or neglects to perform these duties, a fine of not less than $100 shall, not ward or code, shall be imposed. Since Ms. Carvalesi has repeatedly refused to turn over material, I have a legal right to have. She is in direct violation of this law. I have asked Officer Bezakis if he has ever imposed that fine. He has refused to answer me. His silence leads me to believe that no fine has ever been attributed. I am curious as to why Deputy Bezakis, a high-ranking police officer, has chosen not to enforce this particular law. I would like to mention two other occasions that also include Officer Bezakis. On December 17th, a Thursday, Worcester County District Attorney Joseph Early's office received a letter from me requesting their assistance in the problems I'm having. I believe his office did contact Fitchburg because on a following Monday, Officer Bezakis typed a letter that I received on Christmas Eve. It stated, I quote, "The records you are requesting are unfilled. Ms. Carvalesi has spoken with a city clerk to advise her that you will be coming in," unquote. When I arrived at City Hall, the city clerk had no idea what I was talking about. I showed her a letter from Officer Bezakis, and she stared as she had not even seen Ms. Carvalesi in the recent past. Obviously, this information was not available. On April 22nd, Officer Bezakis sent me a letter which contained one sentence, quote, "I have received your request and will once again, once again, instruct the Animal Control Officer to provide you with the requested materials," unquote. It is now July 21st, and I'm still waiting for that material I was told I had a right to receive. Either Officer Bezakis never spoke to the ACO, or she simply ignores his instructions. That, I believe, is insubordination. Last month, on June 10th, I sent Chief Martinow an email. That email contained five questions that could be answered in less than three or four minutes. On June 22nd, I received a letter from Officer Bezakis that stated, quote, "We have received your latest request of information regarding stray dogs that the city of Fitchburg has been involved with. When the records you are requesting are compiled, I will be in contact with you," unquote. Tomorrow will be one month that I have been waiting for that. I have been waiting. The right to know law stipulates ten days. I would like to finish my statement by repeating what Adely Stevenson, the American Ambassador to the United Nations, said to Andre Gomiko, the Foreign Minister, during the Cuban Missile Crisis. "Sir, I am prepared to wait for my answer until hell freezes over." Thank you very much, and I certainly hope that the petition I have submitted to City Council will be given to the appropriate subcommittee, and I'll be there to discuss this problem with her. Again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak at the public forum?
My name is Kevin Wiley. I live at 320 Pearl Hill Road, and I lived there for forty-two years, and I'm here to support Petition 21-14 to prohibit parking on both sides of Pearl Hill Road, east from 150 Fisher Road intersection island with signage to determine anyone from parking on the roadway. And it is the Massachusetts State Law, RMB, and City Code of Fitchburg. Mass already regulated, there's no parking allowed on the roadway. I'm also here to represent the people that signed. It's not a petition, it's like a, we went around and got signatures, and we had it dated and everything, and I just want, it's for public safety. What's going on, no matter what, people building stuff, drug dealers parking, hunters, the whole nine yards, people just can't park there, but they think they can. And we want to stop doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to add into that, same thing. I'm in favor of 291-14. All it primarily is, is to extend the physical signage of no parking either side of the street on Pearl Hill Road. Years and years ago, they enacted it down below us from John Fitch Highway to number 150. A lot of that had to do with the college commotion. Now that we have an overabundance of housing above Fisher Road, down into our area, a lot more motorists on the roadway, nothing is going to keep our roads safe. That being said, me, fifteen homeowners, neighbors, we now have seven children under the age of twelve, new generation coming up, and we feel that for the safety of Pearl Hill Road, to continue the signage is much as scenic drivers, Sunday drivers don't like it. Pearl Hill Road is a rural city road. We are entitled to have the signage, we believe, because parts of the road are very narrow. Front of our house, twenty feet, nine inches, there is not a passable eastbound up-the-hill, nine feet, six inches for a vehicle to pass. You park a car where it's illegal to do so anyways, anybody behind them has to be around over a double line, which just got painted after seven years of trying to request that on our road. So all we are doing is here, on behalf of us, our neighborhood, looking for safety. We believe signage is a deterrent. And a reminder, this is a Mass law, a City of Fitchburg coded law, and hopefully there'll be some resolve with the council voting our way for Pearl Hill Road and not thinking about your own neighborhoods because there's only one person sitting here who lives on our road. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Steve, congratulations, Kevin. Job well done, known Kevin since we were kids, and proud to have him, and great job. Mr. Martinow, wise election, great selection, proud to have you as chief. Just a quick thing, Petition 291-14, we'd just like that to-
Give your name for the record, please.
Joe Murama, 115 Sum Street, Fitchburg, Mass. We'd like to see if that could be tabled for thirty days until further review of the petition by councilors, by the city police department, and the Safety Committee looks into the situation before we go ahead with this petition. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak at the public forum? All have been heard, we move on to the report of the committee on records. Counselor Green.
Yes, the minutes from the last City Council meeting are in order.
Move the committee's report to be accepted. We have a motion and a second that the committee on records report be accepted. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous. Moving on to the appointments committee. Counselor Bean.
Mr. President. The committee met tonight at 7:15, exactly, and we had some, we had three new appointments for student police officers of Fitchburg Police Department. Timothy Friend, Brian Walls, and Quinn Smith are all approved unanimously by the committee. We also had a special police officer for the city of Fitchburg approve Lieutenant Kevin O'Brien, and we had a member of the Youth Commission, Michaela Konstasa. Her terms expire May 6th, that was approved. For the reappointments, we had two members of the Airport Commission, Kit Walker and Jack Naylor, and on the Youth Commission, we had Jillian Woldens, Sophia Goncabez, and Soving Schilling as reappointments to the committee.
Motion to accept the appointments committee report and fill out the appointments to confirm.
We have a motion and a second to accept the appointments committee report and to confirm the appointments. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? It is unanimous. Gentlemen, we're going to wait one second. We have a couple of correspondence to read, and then we'll do all the swearing-in at one time, okay? Thank you. Moving on to communications from her honor, the mayor. Dear honorable councilors, effective August 1st, 2015, I hereby promote the following members of Fitchburg Police Department to the succeeding ranks. Acting Lieutenant Jeffrey J. Howe to the rank of permanent lieutenant. Acting Sergeant Ryan C. Keenan to the rank of permanent sergeant. Officer Christopher T. Garcia to the rank of permanent sergeant. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. Dear honorable councilors, effective immediately, I hereby promote provisional captain Stephen D. Janini to the rank of permanent captain in the Fitchburg Police Department. Provisional Captain Janini was the highest-scoring candidate in the recent two-day assessment center. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. Dear honorable councilors, effective August 3rd, 2015, I hereby promote Sergeant Glenn C. Foster to the rank of provisional lieutenant in the Fitchburg Police Department. Sergeant Foster's promotion is in response to the upcoming retirement of Lieutenant Kevin O'Brien. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. Now, councilors and folks, the city clerk will, oh, go ahead, chief. Chief will have a comment, and then the city clerk will do all the swearing-in.
Good evening, Council President, Mayor Wong, Clerk Farrell. I'd just like to address the appointments that are coming forward this evening. It's my great pleasure that I present to you this evening these several promotions to the command staff of the Fitchburg Police Department. There's been significant changes within the command staff during the last seven months due to retirements. Many of our supervisors have been working in provisional state while waiting for test results. I'd like to first begin speaking about the appointment of Stephen Janini to the rank of permanent captain. Captain Janini has been employed by the Fitchburg Police Department for fourteen years and has successfully risen through all the ranks to his current position. Recently, Captain Janini took part in an extensive two-day assessment center where candidates were tested on their skills, knowledge, and abilities that are the professional expectations for a police captain. Captain Janini received the highest scores during this exam. Captain Janini will work as the operations commander, who shall oversee the everyday operations of the uniformed division of the Fitchburg Police Department. Steve is a very valuable member of the Fitchburg Police Department, and we are very excited for his future within our city. Next, I'd like to speak about the two sergeants that are being promoted this evening, Officer Ryan Keenan and Chris Garcia. Officer Keenan has been working as a provisional sergeant on the midnight shift. Sergeant Keenan has been working for the Fitchburg Police Department for the last fourteen years. He comes from a long and storied family of the Fitchburg Police Department. Sergeant Keenan will bring youth and experience to one of the most important positions in law enforcement today, that being frontline supervisors as sergeants. He will continue to work as a patrol supervisor on the midnight shift. Officer Garcia, he's been working in the patrol division for the past eighteen years. As stated, Chris has worked extremely hard to achieve such high scoring on the last promotional exam. Officer Garcia is a very active police officer, and during his eighteen-year career, he has earned the respect of his fellow police officers that will follow him to the rank of supervision. Sergeant Garcia will be assigned with Sergeant Keenan, working the midnight shift under the command of Lieutenant Howe. Lieutenant Howe couldn't be with us this evening because of his vacation plans. However, I'd like to just explain a little bit about Lieutenant Howe. He was promoted to the rank of provisional lieutenant back in February due to a vacancy. The promotion to lieutenant, permanent lieutenant, will fill his vacancy due to Captain Janini be promoted. Lieutenant Howe has been taking on additional duties within the police department, working as a community liaison in order to strengthen the police department's ties in the community. Lieutenant Howe will be a very valued member of the police department, and he shall command the eleven-to-seven night shift, midnight shift with Sergeant Keenan and Sergeant Garcia. And the last one spoken tonight was provisional appointment of Sergeant Foster to police lieutenant. Lieutenant Foster will be overseeing one of our busiest shifts and taking over where Lieutenant O'Brien leaves on August 1st. There's been a lot of change in the command staff in the last seven months since my promotion as chief, and I'm proud to say that we're finally in a position where most of our appointments are going to be completed. We have one more exam this October, but the future of the police department is now in place with some exceptional qualified candidates in the command staff that I present to you tonight. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, chief. We will now have the swearing-in component of this, and what I let people know is, they'll come forward, the clerk will swear them in. Family members, come forward, take all the pictures you'd like. Once a swearing-in occurs, if you want to have pictures taken with mom and dad or your wife and kids, go right ahead. We'll take some time, and everybody gets an opportunity to have this done. We want to start with the new officers first, chief? Yes, please. Gentlemen? Come forward.
Please raise your right hands. I solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Fitchburg.
Chief?
(applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause) I do solemnly promise and swear that I will faithfully and impartially, and to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform and discharge all the duties incumbent upon me as a permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. So help me God. (applause)
That the city could expect to see in the development of this project if it moves forward. Is that okay, or do you want me to run through everything and then?
It's your presentation. It's your presentation.
Okay. In that case, if you look at the 11 by 17s that show, it's a CAD file. The city of Pittsburgh has the West wastewater plant, which was primarily designed to treat wastewater discharge from the paper mills in the city. Now that we're down to just one paper mill, the city is basically using this as a large pump station. It doesn't provide any treatment. For the anaerobic digestion project, we're talking about bringing in both municipal wastewater solids from the city of Pittsburgh and the region, as well as source separated organic materials from around this region, like a 25 mile radius, to use as an organic feedstock for an anaerobic digestion process, which would generate methane to be burned on site in internal combustion engines, which would generate power, and also reduce the volume of the waste materials that are brought onto the site. A pasteurization process would also be constructed inside the existing building, which would result in an EPA Class A residual, which can be land applied or used for fertilizer. In other words, it has a market value. So, the existing facility to the south of the center of the facility, of the West Plant, would remain in use for high-flow equalization for the paper mills and also some stormwater, which it currently does. And that would take place in this existing tankage. The proposed modifications would take place to the north of where the center line of the site, and maximize reuse of the existing West Plant building, which had an as-built cost in 1970 of $13 million. I don't know what that is in today's dollars, but there's significant value to that infrastructure, which is right now sitting unused. We talked about the possibility of doing this project as a design-build-operate procurement process, which Mr. Nichols will get into shortly, so that the city could basically have this thing designed, built, and operated for a certain period of time as a turnkey operation. So that's the project in a nutshell. As Mr. Murawski mentioned, we would be available to attend a longer-duration workshop to be able to fill in some more details on the project for the councilman. At this point, are there any questions or comments from anybody that's reviewed the report?
Council Green.
My question is, with the city, you're talking about keeping it city-owned and city-operated, would that in turn mean that we could make money from collecting residuals from the other communities in our area?
Yes, the initial concept is to have a contractor come in and do all of it. And so the city would have a contract with that contractor to design this facility, construct the facility, and then operate it for, pick a period, maybe 15 years. At the end of that period, the city could, in that contract, dictate what happens to the facility. It could be turned back over to the city. They could, there could be an option to renew the operations contract with the contractor. And the reason we looked at that, there was two reasons. One, Mr. Jordan, who preceded Mr. Murawski, was concerned that the city need not take on additional employees. And also, there was some efficiency to having a contractor manage the solids coming to the facility, and then finding a market for the product. And the benefit to the city would be, obviously, maintenance of this piece of infrastructure, added value to the infrastructure, and then reducing the cost of residuals management for the city. So that's one scenario. Another scenario could be a typical design, bid, build project, where the city submits the project for bids, or advertises it for bids, and the city owns it, the city staffs it, and the city operates it. But from our initial report, or initial study, it seems like a design-build-operate procurement process might be the most efficient. And, I'm forgetting a major piece, there is a significant tax benefit to a contractor right now, to be able to take on a project like this, because it's a renewable energy project. That tax benefit would benefit the city, but it's not directly available to the city if the city handles the entire project themselves.
And my other question is, it looks from the drawings that you provided, that the bones, so to speak, of the infrastructure are already there in place. I mean, the majority of it is in place. You're talking about maybe, what, three or four specialized type of tanks or facilities to do what you need it to do, but it looks like everything is kind of already in place.
Yes, there would be some new construction, but again, we're trying to capitalize or maximize the use of the existing facility, which will help save some of the implementation costs.
And the cost of this project?
There were three scenarios discussed in the report. We made some assumptions based on market value for the product, very conservative assumptions. We didn't assume that it had a tremendous market value. But we're looking at roughly a $24,000, excuse me, $24 million project capital cost. If you look at the executive summary, we also broke it down and described a net 20-year cash flow. So, the optimal situation that we looked at, which was the highest tipping fees and to bring the material in, decent power cost, or power sales, and a zero net value for the material that's produced. In other words, the sale value of the residuals, or the bio solids, would roughly negate the trucking costs. So it's very conservative. That has a net 20-year cash flow of about $52 million. And the other scenarios, which are described in the paragraph a little bit up above, which we're basically looking at more and more conservative scenarios, we stepped down. Scenario two is 38 million, scenario three was 22 million. All three of those scenarios, even the worst case, had a net positive benefit-cost ratio.
Thank you.
Council Dean Tally.
Mentioned Option A, which is procurement process being, it's privately run. City owns it, private contractor's taking care of it. And that, from where I sit, is to me the only option. City of Pittsburgh has a $200 million unfunded liability right now. We cannot afford to add more people to this. How many people would it require to staff this kind of an operation?
In the report, I think we talked about 15.
15.
I think. I'd have to, I'd have to reread the report.
So, so my memory is not well with, because I read it about several weeks ago, but the, if we have a private contractor do all the operations, do the build-out, everything, and they run it for 15, 20 years, whatever the contract terms are between the city and this company, where, what is the financial benefit to the city? Do we get any kind of lump-sum payment? Do we get any kind of revenue from this, on top of what the contractor makes? I mean, where's the, I'm looking at this from a revenue perspective for the city's budget. I mean, do we get any benefit beyond the reduction in waste?
The net cash flow kind of describes what you would be seeing.
Right.
But more specifically, the city right now is taking all their residuals from the East Plant, and bringing it to the Pittsburgh City landfill under contract. I think Waste Management?
Waste Management owns and operates the facility, or operates the facility on behalf of the city.
So, right now, you have a contract with Waste Management. You're actually paying to bring your residuals to your landfill.
Yep.
In exchange, they give you a low rate in exchange for the city of Pittsburgh treating leachate from the landfill.
Right.
So that's a cost, a net cost for the city.
That would go away.
Yes, in this scenario. Because basically, all the residuals from the city, plus the regional residuals, would have a net market value. There'd be a tipping fee that the contractor would accept to process them, and then they would be responsible for marketing them on the other end, basically making the residuals go away and extending the life of the landfill, which I think has got 25 years left on it.
Twenty, 25, so 10 years.
It's not the only source of solids going to the landfill, but it would help slow it down.
Do we have any idea, and I don't have this off the top of my head, I know Mr. Curry's here too, but how much do we spend a year with Waste Management on that disposal?
I think it was about approximately $100,000 a year.
A year, okay.
Yep. And that's just Pittsburgh City residuals.
Okay.
So, another benefit would be, we talk about the cost of the facility. The net cost is about $24 million. So if you have a design-build-operate procurement process, and the design-build-operate contractor could realize the 30% tax credit, which is available right now for renewable energy projects, for private entities, not municipal, if they can realize that, that reduces the cost of the contract, the cost of construction. And then, you have whatever it takes to operate that facility. They're going to roll that in to a big number and amortize it. So, that 30% tax credit basically reduces your contract with the contractor each year for the 15 or 20 years. I don't know what that value is. There's all kinds of scenarios that you can run, but based on the scope of the study that we had, which was to do a cursory economic analysis, it's far enough in favor to warrant further looking into.
And my final question is, let's say after the original 15 or 20 years, contract expires, let's say another company comes forward and wants to do it, hypothetical, would the city be in a bargaining position at that point to say, "It's going to cost you X amount just to secure the rights to run this place"? Again, looking at money into the city.
Yeah, yeah.
Since this is a gem, if you will, this is going to be a very good thing, I mean, it looks like there might be companies interested in running this, you know?
There's a lot of factors that can affect that. If there, if it's a very lucrative deal, the contractor who's going to be leaving at that point, or renegotiating, if it's very lucrative, obviously, it would be in the city's favor. If two or three of these spring up in different parts of the state, and they have lower tipping fees, and now there's competition for material that you could use to generate the power, it might be less attractive, and the city's bargaining position might decrease a little bit.
Okay.
So, it's really hard to say at this point.
Okay. I would personally like to have that workshop with a real in-depth picture of the costs, if it were privately run versus if it were publicly run. I'd like to know what it would cost to publicly run it. You said 15 employees, that doesn't include the operational costs, the electric, all that. It'd be interesting to see that part of the equation, just so we can, so I can rest easy at night, with my original viewpoint, that having it privately done is probably in our financial interest, more than it would be if we had it publicly run.
Well, again, the single biggest piece of that, going to what you're saying, is that 30% tax credit.
Right.
And that's available to private entities, but not to municipalities.
Yep.
So that pushes you more toward a design-build-operate.
Right.
And the window for that opportunity closes December 31st, 2016.
Okay.
So that's coming up quick, after which, I'm told, the tax credit drops down to 10%. While that doesn't kill the project, it certainly would have a significant financial impact on it.
Thank you.
Council Beazall.
Thank you. I pretty much figured that out, what Council Dean Tally said. I feel the same way. I definitely need to see numbers. I need to see what this looks like on both sides of the sheet, to know exactly which is the best way. So, on the project cost, I know that we're talking about having an entity go in and run it. The project cost, or that would, is that funded by, who's funding that? This private entity, or the city, or?
The private entity would have investors, and that's who would fund the project.
Okay.
I would see, I would imagine, in a scenario like this, that there would be like a flat-rate contract, or some kind of scaled contract payment that the city would make to the contractor that ends up getting the bid.
And, in the documentation that you gave us, it was quite lengthy. When Massachusetts passed a law about not putting the biodegradables anymore in the waste, produce, et cetera, et cetera, this facility would be able to take that particular kind of waste, correct?
Well, there's two kinds of waste. The initial step that the state of Massachusetts took was to get rid of source-separated organics. And that's bulk organics from, you could classify it as pre-consumer, so, produce waste from grocery stores, bulk fats, oils, and greases. And then, the next step, which is coming, would be to separate post-consumer organics, like plate scrapings from restaurants, cafeteria wastes, that kind of thing, and also household. Right now, the first phase is to get the source-separated organics, which is relatively clean, raw, organic material. And the reason for that is because that's easily achievable. When you take it to the next step, which is to take post-consumer, now, you've got some additional pathogen concerns because of human contact, and you also have some additional processing requirements to get rid of, like foil, plastic ties, wire ties, you know, the type of contaminants you'd see in household trash. So, our loading numbers, organic loading numbers for this report were based on source-separated organics.
Okay.
And initially found that those materials themselves would not support a project like this, would not make it economically feasible. However, when you bring in some paper mill residuals, which are close by, and you bring in some of the bio solids that were, that used to be a couple of years ago, brought into Pittsburgh for incineration, if you bring those materials in as an organic source, now all of a sudden, you've got enough gas generation capacity to make this project viable. So the source-separated organics piece is actually a small fraction of this right now.
Okay. So, pretty much, my next question was going to be, the regulations from the government, it sounds like they're going to get stricter, not, they're not backing off on that. The second thing would be, so this company that is actually going to be managing this, if we go with that scenario, they would be responsible for any regulations, any federal inspections, any fines from federal inspections, anything like that, correct?
Correct. And I would imagine that your contract with this entity is going to be quite lengthy. But the good news is, is there's plenty of these project procurement processes that have been done in the past, and also in the state of Massachusetts, so it's not the first time around. You won't be the first one through the gate. But yes, that would be written into the contract, that since they're operating it, they would be responsible for compliance with the state and federal regulations for the facility. In addition to that, we built in the extra step of pasteurization to get up to a Class A pathogen-free material that can be reused, in anticipation of tightening regulations.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Caddy.
If there are any other questions, you can drop them to me, and we can respond to the questions. We're at about 15 minutes right now. I don't know if we want to...
I've got a couple of councils who have questions. That's okay, I'd like to let them go, but we'll try to keep it. Council Caddy.
Jeff, if we do meet, could you give us a larger map? I want to bring your attention to the one that you gave us on the lower left, where the entrance to this plant is present.
The size of this board?
Yep. A larger map, meaning a larger area. My point, my point is, on the lower left of this map, is a, an old railroad bridge that's very narrow, and you're going to have more traffic coming to this facility. And possibly, you might want to think about changing the entrance to a different location, because you couldn't pick a worse place to put the entrance. So a larger map. And then also, on the west side of this, the city owns the old pulp pits. There's 25 acres up there that very possibly may be developing, so that may play into the picture of this, and also, the new train station. There's, you know, traffic slowing, things like that. So a bigger map, I think, would help us a lot. You were talking about if we went with a private contractor, we would be leasing the property to them, and the equipment that's there now, but they're going to be investing $24 million to renovate this plant. Will they own the equipment included in that $24 million?
There would be a phased transfer to the city of that, of that real estate.
Is it taxable? If they're going to invest $24 million in equipment, is that taxable to the city?
That is a good question. I believe it is. I believe it is.
So there would be a tax benefit, a personal property tax?
Yes, for the value that was added to the, to that property.
So, during the design, I think that needs to be discussed with a potential developer, because they will also be imposed with a tax, which will play into this.
One of the things Mr. Nichols is going to talk about in a minute, the next steps for the project, if it moves ahead, is going to be the development of a detailed basis of design. We did a very cursory technical and financial ability analysis, which is what the grant covered for the city. Basically, an initial tire-kicking. So, the next step, one of the next steps would be a detailed technical basis of design, where tanks are sized, heating and ventilation systems are sized, final, not final, but more detailed or refined costs for budgeting can be put together. And then, some of the issues that you're talking about can be addressed, including the site access, and some other issues that were raised during some of the public meetings. Those would all be addressed in that basis of design report. Then that information could be used as part of a procurement process, so that the city has more control over the facility that's built. If it was sent out with a request for proposals right now, you could get five different kinds of digestion facilities in there of varying qualities, and the basis of design report will not only nail down some of the technical issues, but basically build a framework that all of the bidders have to work within, so that you can have the, so you have control over the quality of the product.
And I guess the biggest concern from the people who live up in that general area is the smell. And I know you have a lot of work to do with that, but I just want to make sure you understand that there's a big concern from the people that live up there, because...
Council, could you speak a little louder?
Sure. There's a big concern with the people that live up there, the smell that comes from the plant. Even on hot summer's days, we still get a smell down from the paper mill.
Yeah.
It comes down, and it follows the river down through West Pittsburgh. So, that's, for me, that's going to be a big one. And then, of course, the aesthetics of the plant itself, you know, the general upkeep doesn't look too good right now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Council Bean.
Just a quick question. You'd mentioned other projects. There's a project in Lawrence, I think, they have a digestion system there. Is that a similar project, similar size that we'd have here?
I don't remember if it's similar size or not. Mr. Nichols might be more familiar with that. It's...
Similar process?
Similar process. They have anaerobic digesters already at that wastewater plant.
I mean, we could see one that, I'm saying to myself, is, there's one locally or nearby that we could go and visit to see how it operates, and the smells and the, and the noises that it may have, so.
There's quite a number of facilities that are anaerobic digestion facilities that you could tour.
You may want to provide a list of that.
Yeah.
At some point.
The one in Lawrence, that they're talking about doing now to address the solid waste, they're going to add, I believe, additional digestion capacity at their wastewater plant.
Okay.
So it's similar, but different.
Right. But maybe a list of sites that are similar to the Pittsburgh site, that people could take a look at, or do a site visit would be helpful. Thank you.
Closing, I just got one quick question. When this was built, we got a good, long use out of it. It was built in the 70s. This process that you are proposing, is this something that will also have a shelf-life in it sometime, and it'll be extinct? And do we have any speculation as to what that might be?
The, the life of this plant was dependent greatly on the viability of the paper industry, which has changed. The population of the state is slowly increasing, not as dramatically as after the Cold War, but it's, it's increasing, and because of that, more residuals are generated. In addition, there's more and more effort to divert organics from the landfills, to maximize the length of the life of the landfills, because they're getting harder and harder to cite. I don't see this technology becoming less valuable. I think this project might have a longer life.
Thank you. Jeff?
So, thank you for the comments. If any come to mind after the meeting, as Jeff said, please funnel them to us through Jeff, and we'd be glad to answer them. I'd like to have Kent Nichols, who is our wastewater, just lost it.
Guru.
Guru, thank you.
I'm going to be real quick, because we use more than our time, as Jeff said, so...
So he's going to discuss?
Respectful of the council and everyone's time. I just want to touch on real briefly, there are a bunch of things that still need to be worked out, and your questions pretty much point that up. This is a very sensitive and large and complex project. It's not simple. It takes a lot of discussion. So as Jeff mentioned, one thing we think is really important is continuing the public engagement process. We think the appropriate way to do that is probably with a work session that would make the council, and maybe potentially some of the other boards in the city, comfortable that they could get all their questions answered, in a way that we can spend as much time as we need to, different forum, obviously, than we're here tonight. As Smitty said, we actually would like to flesh out some more details that will be necessary. Once you've kind of chosen your course, there's a reasonable need for a further report, a technical basis of design report, that would also talk about procurement methodologies that you would use. As we talked about, design-build-operate, trying to find a private partner. Essentially, the project that we're talking about, the concept here is a public-private partnership, which means that there's some sensitivity to making sure that you pick the right partner, and that the city gets the right benefit out of that relationship. And defining all those things become very important. In addition, as Smitty said, the schedule becomes very important for you. If you want to go public-private partnership and find a private partner to do this, market conditions generally favor whoever's into the business first. So as other projects, like the Greater Lawrence Sanitary Districts project, become more viable, they will start to water down the benefits. And what that means is, your private partner may be willing to offer you less money the longer it takes to implement a project like this. So there's a lot of careful consideration that's needed, and I think that all points back to the need for that sit-down, you know, get you as many answers as you can possibly sit for in one evening. It can be a long process, but it's very important in the grand scheme of things. And lastly, I just want to point out, that discussion of this becomes very important on a, kind of a state level, because there's so many benefits to a project like this. In particular, one reason Amy Barrett from Mass CEC is here tonight, is because this project is actually very promising. This is actually a really good, we've looked at these projects across the state, and there aren't as many great sites to do this with the infrastructure available, with the built-in kind of potential revenue streams, and that makes it a very promising project, but the timeframe to deal with those things becomes limited. So you have a lot in front of you, and, you know, we welcome the opportunity to work further with you in the future on it, so.
Thank you. Council Joseph?
Just a quick question. How much will we have invested in this as a city prior to getting it ready to go out to a package? How much is it, what's our current cost?
So, to date, your share has been a fraction, a match on the grant money. You've, almost all the efforts we've done to date have been a match, and the city's share has been less than $20,000?
I believe the match percentage is five.
Yeah. So it's been a real small, so far, you've spent a very small, your money. CEC has backed you to date.
Yeah.
There are some additional funds available, we'll continue to try to tap, to use for future. The first investment the city would need to make is the basis of design report, and then procurement assistance, to try to make sure that you get the right thing. As my compatriot here, Smitty, mentioned, the agreement that you want to strike with these folks, because you're going to likely be in business with them for 20 years, is a complex agreement that needs to be well thought out. There are a lot of existing models for that, but we strongly recommend customizing those. We've written them with other communities, and it takes a lot of effort to do that. So, you will have to consider how much of an appetite you have to spend some money before you get into it, but it's probably a couple of hundred thousand dollars of the city's money before you can start to recoup that. The goal in a public-private partnership is to minimize city money and maximize a private investor's money upfront. But in doing that, remember that that also minimizes your long-term return. It's a give and take.
I'm all for renewable energy, what's good for the environment. I'm glad to see that we're moving forward with this, with a, with a place, that a facility... I'm glad to see that we're moving forward with this, with a, with a place that, a facility that is being underutilized. Um, it's just, it seems to work all around for the city of Pittsburgh, so I'm glad that we're moving forward.
Anything else, Jeff? Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Freethan. He's a wastewater practice leader.
Next, we'll have a special presentation from Steven, Stephen Curry, Board of Health Director regarding waste management. Mr. Curry.
Good evening. I'm having some difficulties with my PowerPoint presentation. I did have it working at six o'clock. However, I can...
You can do your song and dance. You can just do your song and dance.
I can, see if I can wing it the best I can with some props. Before I start, I just want to introduce a couple of folks. In the back of the room, uh, black shirt is Mr. Tom Murray. He is the Regional Area Manager for the New England Landfills, uh, very involved with our landfill. Uh, to the right, uh, is our Cribside Collection Area Manager, Michael Wall. I know in the, uh, in my budget hearing, um, there were some concerns about Cribside Collection, so I thought we'd briefly touch, uh, on those issues if there are questions. I was asked to do a presentation on the financials, but I just want to do a real quick presentation on what's happening at the landfill. I had some, uh, great aerial photos to show you folks of what's going on, but I'm going to have to resort to the 1990's blown-up picture. So here's a, a, a bird's eye view of the landfill. Basically, Route 31 is here. And the landfill is, uh, broken up into three phases. Phase one is, uh, sort of the grassy section you see here. That is owned by the city of Pittsburgh. Um, this, in phase two, is in this area, which is about 22 acres. And then phase three is over in this area. The active landfill area is this area, phase three. This is a very old picture, so this shows the capping of, of phase one. Up in this area, um, I had some great pictures of it, is our gas-to-energy plant. Basically, there are a number of gas, uh, monitors, uh, throughout our landfill. These draw gas into our gas-to-energy, uh, uh, system. There are two turbines in that building. Uh, there is a, uh, very complicated sulfur and other material remover, um, from the gas and ultimately it is sold to the grid. Uh, the city does reap a benefit annually on that, uh, process as well. In this picture, you'll see the Pittsburgh drop-off area. Uh, and there is also the scale house up, up in this, uh, top region. Uh, the scale house is obviously where, uh, our scale master that is employed by the city of Pittsburgh, uh, works on a daily basis. The landfill is owned by the city of Pittsburgh, but is operated by Resource Control Incorporated, which is, which is a subsidiary of Waste Management. The site is located on Pittsburgh Road and in Westminster, Mass. The site is a mu- multi-parcels of ownership with three phases of landfill sections, as I have mentioned. Uh, the current active section, and I believe section two is owned by R C I. The city of Pittsburgh owns section one. As I mentioned, section one has been closed and covered back in the eighties. Um, there is also a leachate collection system which is tied into our, um, sewer system, into our wastewater treatment plant. Leachate is actually collected from the landfill and then piped down to our wastewater treatment plant. Incidentally, just in the last year, uh, we did sign an agreement, uh, with, uh, R C I Waste Management. Uh, they operated a landfill in Barry. Uh, the Barry landfill, uh, is closing. However, it still produces leachate beyond what the town of Barry can produce. So now we have made an agreement with wastewater, so we are able to deposit that, uh, leachate from the Barry landfill. Uh, and that will also benefit the city of Pittsburgh. It's estimated somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000 annual. Uh, so our, uh, collection system will, will provide the treatment. Uh, let's see, what else can I make sure that I didn't tell you? Incidentally, um, the land, as you heard earlier, uh, the landfill is projected to be closing, uh, July 2025, uh, so we're looking at about 10 years from now. Uh, and we are working on, uh, you'll see that the area is surrounded by forest, which is, uh, Wemester State Forest, and it almost borders the, the town line in several areas. There is an area, uh, south of this picture, uh, it is the Westminster drop-off section. You'll also see a yard waste collection system where there's winrows of, uh, yard waste actually degrading, used for cover material, uh, at the landfill. Incidentally, the cover material of the city of Pittsburgh does benefit from, uh, about $100,000 a year when cover material is received by the landfill. In 2014, the city of Pittsburgh produced about a little over 11,000 tons of trash to this landfill. Uh, the town of Westminster contributed about 2,500 tons. Uh, and commercially, uh, this landfill accepted somewhere around 210,000 tons of outside. So you have a total of about 220,000 tons that the landfill accepted, um, in 2014. Obviously, ninety, or more than 90% of it was commercial trash. Benefits to accepting trash, um, the city receives, um, host fees. I had a chat to break this down, so I'm going to try to make this as clear as possible. The city receives host fees, um, up to 1,750 tons per day. That is what the, um, capacity per day is of the landfill. Uh, the landfill annually can only accept 390,000 tons, uh, so we're a far cry from 390,000 tons, uh, which is a good thing because it does extend the life of the landfill. Uh, as I mentioned, as far as the host fees, uh, the city, between host fees, the city collects about, uh, in 2014, we collected about $1.3 million. It's, it's in increments, so the more tonnage per day collected, uh, the more revenue is produced for the city. The city also receives several other benefits, um, that are quite, uh, advantageous. Uh, we are entitled to about four household hazardous waste collection days. Um, that's about upwards of $40,000 a year to, to operate. Uh, the, uh, Waste Management operates the drop-offs, which is about, uh, $75,000 bonus. Uh, we also receive a, uh, reduced rate for our tonnage of collection for, for disposal. We pay a little under $40 a ton. It is expected that, um, if, if we were to pay that commercial, it would be about $76 a ton. Uh, so we're looking at an increase of disposal cost, uh, almost double if we were to, uh, close the landfill and have to pay to dispose of our trash. So disposal cost would nearly double. As part of the contract, Waste Management provides free recycle collection and it also provides free disposal collection. They've invested quite a bit of materials in our, uh, in the monitoring wells, gas extraction system. So it, it, it was good that the city showed some commitment, uh, long-term. Uh, it's not easy to just pick up your tools at a landfill and just, uh, move on and, and hand it over to somebody else. Are there any questions? Maybe I'll jump right to that.
Counselor Green.
Hi, Steve. We've talked a lot about...
Steve? If you'd like, you can just put that and lean it against the table in front of you so you're not... Well, that wasn't exactly what I intended, but... There you go, buddy.
That's part of winging it.
Well, I appreciate you winging it. And we have talked, um, over the last couple of years about adding more benefit to the residents of Pittsburgh by maybe doing more ward cleanups or maybe having where instead of it, you know, household furniture ending up on the sidewalk or on the side of this, you know, road or in a parking lot, where we would actually hopefully work in partnership with Waste Management about having almost like a free day at the dump or something where people could just, if they've got the means to get it up to the dump, just get rid of it.
Can I touch on that real quickly?
Yes, please do, yes.
I just want to educate folks, um, if it has picked up a bulk item that you referred to left at Cribside, if it is picked up at Cribside, uh, the collection cost is $10 per bulk item. Uh, right now, if those bulk items are brought to landfill, it's free. But yes, we, we could consider, uh, having household days. I'm, I'm not 100% sure that those would, uh, stop the Cribside dumping that, that does happen occasionally, but I'm willing to listen to any ideas on...
Right. I know we've talked about that. So can you give the residents at home, when I call or send pictures of household, you know, the futons, the couches, the refrigerators, the big, the big TVs that are left at the sidewalk, how much does that cost the city of Pittsburgh to go and have those items removed?
Um, it would cost me $10 to remove a bulk item, probably somewhere upwards of, uh, $30 to $50 on a television or a CRT, something with a cathode, cathode ray tube that, that requires recycling and not, uh...
And that's if, if, but that's not including the men that would be required to go to that facility, pick it up, get it, and then get it transported up to the landfill.
Correct. The landfill cannot, you cannot landfill cathode ray tubes. It is a waste ban by, by, established by Massachusetts. So it has to be recycled, much like yard waste, certain bulk items.
All right.
The finally cheapest process is not always the landfill because a, a lot of that market is not an interest to Waste Management, but there are, we do have two transfer stations in the city, uh, and they are in business to collect those items. I encourage folks to, to take, I know it's extensive, uh, disposal is very complicated, but we do send a, a calendar to each household every year. I know it's eight pages and I know it's a lot of reading, but, but, uh, all this information is in there.
Right. I just hope that we're moving towards the right direction with, so I don't have to keep calling you three times a week saying that there's items in Ward One that need to be picked up. So if we could make that easier, I, I would like to think that it would make a difference. Thank you.
Counselor Beazell.
Uh, thank you. Um, thank you, Steve. So right now, you're saying that we collect 1.43 million?
For host fees, uh, we collect about 2.2 million, uh, combined with all the benefits that are included.
Okay.
Revenue from host fees, which is basically municipal solid waste, is about 2.2 million dollars right now.
And that goes into the general fund?
It does.
So in 10 years, we will be out 2.2 million dollars?
We would be out 2.2 million dollars and our disposal cost would double.
So what would the disposal cost be?
Right now, our disposal costs are somewhere between $450,000 and $500,000 annually. Um, that would, that would nearly double.
So you're looking at three, 300 million do...
That would be...
Three million dollars.
Provided in 10 years, that the disposal rate would be around $75 a ton. I'm, I'm sure it'll probably increase in those 10 years.
Okay.
There are communities in Massachusetts that pay upwards of $100 per ton.
Has there been thought of taking some of this money, a portion of it that we're receiving every year, and look for other areas or other places or other, um...
Expansion, you referred to?
Expansion or doing something with the, with the money because right now, we're just spending it and we know that in 10 years from now, I mean, you're talking almost, it's going to cost us $3 million if you're looking at both what we're getting and... Just a, just a thought, because I, I, it's, 10 years isn't that far off.
No, it's not.
I mean, I'll, I'll hopefully be retired by then, but it's not that far off, so...
So yes, I mean, that is an option we can look at. Uh, we are also putting, uh, team, trying to team up with Westminster and, uh, put some ideas together and, on, on expansion and, and folks, uh, surrounding the landfill that, uh, are willing to play.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Boshman.
Steve, hold on. In regards to Counselor Green's statement about the cost and the trash that we're picking up on the side of the road, as counselors, we drive around our wards and we see box mattresses, TVs, et cetera, et cetera. We are taking away from the city valuable productivity when we send a two-man crew out to pick up a TV and bring it back to the city bond to dispose of it and then go back to their job.
Can I interrupt there, Counselor?
Go ahead.
We don't, we don't do that. We order property owners to, to remove it.
But the property owner, what I'm told, is that we have to have proof. So if, if, which, I'm going to use a place like Waste, Waste Court. Their street...
But the TV is always on someone's property.
Right. But what happens if they tell you it's not ours?
It's on their property.
Well, I was told differently from the, one of your men. They said if it's on the sidewalk, we don't know who dropped it there.
Well, if it's in front of a, a property, then, then that property's responsible for it. Uh, I can only think of maybe two occasions where we had the DPW, uh, collect a, a, a TV. And in that instance, we actually, uh, leaned the property that we took it from in front of it and, uh, cost for labor of DPW employees as well as what it cost us to dispose of, which some, was somewhere around $200. And that property was leaned. But I, I can only think of a couple of occasions that that's happened since 2012.
Because when I go around and I see them, they're not in front of their, they no longer put them in front of their properties. They put it either in front of the vacant property that's bank-owned or...
Bank's responsible then.
Or, or they just leave it on the curb and just drop it there. Because I'll use Waste Court and I'll use Cl- on Clarendon Street right now, as I speak to you, right now on a vacant lot, which, in all fairness to the party that doesn't, that owns that piece of property, that he maintained it and he put up a barrier, that the property next door gets vacant and they take whatever trash they don't want and they dump it there. So you're going to go and ta- and tag a guy like me where I don't even have a house there, but they put it there?
If I don't witness the dumping, then, then we're forced to, to approach the property owner. As far as vacant properties, we do have a vacant registry. Property owners, including banks, are required to register the property. They're required to have someone, uh, inspect the property on a weekly basis and, and give us a, an address or a location that, uh, is no long, no more than 20 miles from the property. We have successfully sought out a lot of banks and ma- and held them much more accountable for instances like what you described as far as dumping on a property. And that's the idea. Incidentally, we also, uh, charge $100 for that, uh, for a building to be vacant annually.
So were you gonna, so were you gonna tell me that back in March, when I was cleaning up the sidewalks on Clay, on, at, at the time of our cleanup, not March, but the time of our cleanup, and I went down to the city bond and I saw, uh, two workers with a truckload of furniture, which probably took, if you really wanted to, two hours one way and two hours another way, to bring it, pick it up, bring it down to the city bond, two workers, and take it and go back to their job at a cost of approximately $100 an hour. If you want to put all the benefits, not counting the wear and tear of the machinery that they were using, at a cost of $100. So you're going to say that you're going to collect $400 from that property owner at a cost, it's, it's two guys, two guys, two hours, four hours, $100 an hour, that's $400 for those two guys, for the DPW? Because we just took them off, off of repairing the streets to go and pick up the trash.
As far as, as far as I know, I mean, it does happen. I'm not going to say the DPW doesn't pick up a TV. I'm, I'm sure it happens. They end up in the street. But it's, most of the, most of the time that I know, they, they let me know that there is a TV somewhere and they got a complaint over it. somewhere, and they got a complaint over it.
No, I'm not trying, don't get me wrong.
Counselor, you're asking him to respond for what the DPW does.
No, but he's, but he's, they're doing what they're told to do. Because if I make a phone call, I get a listen, right now, at him for Clarendon Street. Right now, Clarendon Street, the bottom of Clarendon Street, there's a bureau, there's a couch...
But he's got a Board of the Health, not DPW. And you keep talking about what the DPW guys are doing.
Yeah, but...
They don't report to Mr. Curry.
They don't report to Mr. Curry, but Mr. Curry sends them the information to go and pick up the product. Am I not right?
No, that's what he's saying, no.
He's not doing it, because they do it.
Like I said, I might have done that twice since 2012.
Well, that's not what I'm being told, but all right. I'm sorry about that, then, because I was being told something differently. All right.
I mean, if they do it on their own...
Counselor Joseph.
Is there, is there a committee or anybody looking at the retirement of the landfill to determine what the best, money-wise, is best for the city of Pittsburgh? Is it...
Yeah, we are actually putting a committee together, and if there is interest from the council, I'd like to know if there are councils that are interested in being... We have approached the town of Westminster. We haven't got much of a response yet, but I would like to have representation from the town of Westminster as well, on that committee.
Because I mean, if it's advantageous...
It's not established yet, but we are...
If it's advantageous for us to take less tipping fees, this $3 million that we'll be paying in the future to prolong the life of our landfill another 10 years, by costing us $1 million now a year in revenue, as opposed to $3 million in 2016, it'll be $3 million in 2025. I mean, I would hope that we start looking at that tomorrow, to find out if we can expend that life by controlling our own need for money in the city. Because it just doesn't seem to make sense that we're not, we're not looking at that, and that we continue to allow Waste Management to put more capacity into it at our cost in 10 years. And we'll be, we'll be the, like Angelo said, I plan on being retired in 10 years, but I'll be on a fixed income, and that $3 million is going to come out of what I can't afford to pay. So I would hope that somebody's looking forward, looking towards our future as the city of Pittsburgh, and not Waste Management's.
We need to take a look at whether landfills are the best disposal method in 2025 as well. Do we expand the landfill, or do we take a look at the gas extraction system that's being proposed by the DPW? That's, that's, we need to have all the right players on that committee.
Yeah. I mean, we need to be, if it's 10 years that we're looking at losing our landfill, we need to be doing that 10 years ago.
Counselor Caddy.
Steve, if we were having this conversation, or if we were having this meeting back in January, we wouldn't be talking about any of this right now. We'd be talking about collections, and what happened with all the major snowstorms. And I understand the gentlemen's here tonight. Could you, it may not be the last year we have a bad winter season. So what have they done to correct what happened to the city last year?
We're actually trying to improve communications. I've been working quite extensively with Mr. Wall on, I think a lot of that problem was communication. Quite frankly, only few people report that they were missed. So a lot of it was, we didn't know that they were being missed. If they reported it, we sent them back, but...
I would think that the onus would be on the drivers, the drivers of the trucks.
And we worked on that, too.
They know if they missed a street.
We actually asked the drivers and the supervisors to provide us a list of those streets that warrant access for collection. And then we put that, those streets on the webpage, and sent it out to the counselors. But that did, that was a slow process. I agree that that needed some work. And we, just in the last couple of days, have, I've discussed with Mr. Wall, some better communication. Maybe that the communication goes directly to Waste Management and not us. But we need to figure out a way that, I need to know that there's a problem if, you know, but you want to touch on that a little bit?
Just before you answer, too, I just want to make one more comment. And I've spoken to you about this before. During the holidays, it seems to me that one recycle pickup every two weeks isn't adequate. During the holidays, that's when most people have a lot of recycles. And I'm guessing that a lot of those go into their rubbish containers and not their recycling, because most people have too much recycled. And it would be, it would be to everybody's benefit, I believe, to have at least a consecutive three-week period during the holidays, to have recycling pickup every week. Because I, you know, I know mine gets full, and you drive around the city, and you see half of them open, and stuff falling out of them, and it just seems very reasonable to me to have that extra collection during the holidays, but...
I agree, but there is a cost to that as well. But folks can access the landfill for recycling, and they can receive a free recycling sticker from, from the health office for those circumstances. I'm all in favor of going weekly recycling. However, there is, there is a couple of hundred thousand dollar cost to go on weekly.
But that would be annually.
That would be annually.
I'm just talking about during the holidays. It seems to be the worst time of year for recycles. But go ahead.
I would love to do that.
So you want to talk about the winter that we want to forget?
Yep.
It was, I think Steve touched on it, that the biggest failure and the biggest miss on our behalf is a lot of the, a lot of the streets that were reported, or get reported in by the guys, were done toward the end of the day, as opposed to necessarily doing it real-time. And then with back-to-back-to-back storms, it just progressively got worse. And we encountered things that we don't ordinarily encounter, that, as you guys will recall, the streets got pinched in with all the storms, and it made it very difficult for the trucks to get down the streets. And in other, in times where it's normal winter weather, when a plow can go down the street, and then someone can park on the street again, now if we had cars parked in the street, we literally could not get down the street. And, you know, part of the reporting that we did was, you know, it was, it was quite frankly, miscommunication. So, you know, moving forward in anticipation of anything like that in the future, we're going to have direct access with our people right to the police department if we need to get cars moved, or the DPW department if we need a street plowed, or we need a street sanded, or the truck can't, simply can't get down the street because it's been pinched in. And that occurred, and unfortunately, it was just the severity of the winter and the timeliness of the storms, just, it, it, it snowballed. And unfortunately, the people at the beginning of the routes, because they were all Monday storms, they were the most affected. And, you know, we had something, you know, anyone that, you know, they, look, you can have an event, you can have a storm, and it can, it can delay a day, like things happen. But when you get 100 inches of, inches of snow in, in a month's period of time, it's just, no one plans for that. And, you know, it's not a, it's not the best explanation, but what happened, it was really a breakdown of communication, and we take responsibility for that. Because it really starts with the driver on the street. And typically, what happens in a snowstorm, if a driver comes down the street and it's not done yet, he'll circle back before he finishes his route that day. That's typically what we do. We don't, okay, we just pass it and don't go back. Because sometimes we're ahead of the plows, sometimes we're behind them. So a lot of times, we'll go back. And unfortunately, with the severity of these storms, and the, and the frequency of them, and the amount of snow, it just, it just, it just, for lack of a better term, snowballed.
Counselor Green.
Mr. Wall, will there ever be an opportunity that you would consider doing a public service, a community board through FATV, or having a direct line so that residents of Pittsburgh can call directly to Waste Management to report if there is a problem?
Yeah, that's what Steve and I are working on now.
Okay.
To try and, to streamline the communication. You know, we may, we may end up just taking all the calls, and run them through our call center, and report back to the city. It may, you know, we do that with a number of other communities, but Steve and I are working on that now. Because it, we want it to, we want to be able to recover as soon as possible.
And how many drivers do you have for Pittsburgh?
For Pittsburgh, we're running five routes.
Yep.
Yeah, five routes. So there's anywhere from five to eight drivers. I mean, because they'll, some of them, sometimes they rotate through. So there's...
So that's all the drivers, five to eight drivers?
Well, there's five routes.
Yeah.
Trash, trash and recycling routes that pick up the city.
Mm-hmm.
But Waste Management has, out of our West Boyston operation, we have probably 150 trucks that we're running. And they, in the residential line of business, I can get back to you with the exact number, but we have probably 40 employees in the residential line of business.
I was just wondering, you know, these are guys that know these streets, that know these routes, that know the streets they've missed, that know the problematic houses. I mean, and again, it broke down very quickly.
It did. There's no question about it.
So, and you know, and we're in July now, we won't meet in August, so it'll be September before you know it, and then it'll be December and February. So I'd like to just have a plan in place, moving forward, in case we get another horrendous winter.
Well, I can assure you that, moving forward, if there's any kind of event like that, the drivers are going to report and miss streets right away.
Okay.
And we may, we may not be going necessarily to the Board of Health. We might be going to the police department to get cars removed. Because part of the problem at the end of the day, and what occurred, is guys were reporting missed streets, but why was it missed? And, you know, it wasn't missed just because of the snow, it was missed maybe because there were cars parked on it, and they couldn't, they couldn't get down the street. It might have been that the street needed to be sanded, might have been plowed but needed to be sanded.
There were many circumstances.
There were so many different circumstances that we encountered this past winter.
Yeah, I mean, there were a lot of folks that just didn't unbury their barrel either. And that's not 100% their fault.
Right. As long as there is a system in place to move forward, where your guys say, okay, you know, we check off that, yeah, we needed to call the police, or we needed the DPW to plow, sand, just so that when we get calls from the residents, we can say, yeah, they're on it, we know about it, they're work, you know, they're doing their best. So I appreciate you at least taking responsibility for what happened over the winter.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
Really quickly, I am also, we did receive a grant of $6,600, so we are exploring a computer app for folks that could sign up, possibly, depending how it works. They could sign up, much like Code Red.
Yep.
And it could give them a call, telling them, you know, reminder when your trash day is. We are taking a look at that, and I hope to have something by, by the end of the year, actually. Thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
There just, there seems to be a little disconnect between what time Mr. Curry says that the trash is supposed to be picked up at the earliest in the morning, and what time your trucks are on the road. Is it 6 o'clock?
Pickup time starts at 6:30. However, the street supervisor encountered a lot of problems starting at that time with the sewer separation project going on in some areas. So basically, when the DPW produces that sewer separation list of where they're going to be, Waste Management tries to beat them. So there are instances that they're not complying with the contract, but it was either start early or not get the trash for a couple of days, so we had to make a compromise.
That's going to change, that'll be back to 6:30 after the sewer?
It should only be, it should be 6:30, unless there's a sewer separation project going on in that area, or...
Okay. I mean, we've had it on our street, 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, that's why I was wondering. You tell me it's 6:30.
Yeah, I have started to get complaints on that.
There's people out there before 6 o'clock, going up and down the streets, and like I said, half my neighbors don't have their rubbish out because they weren't expecting it at 6 o'clock in the morning, so...
Thank you for bringing that up. I've been meaning to discuss that with him as well.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Counselor Bean.
President, because of running so late, I would ask for suspension of rules in Resolution 155-15. Mr. Long is a neighbor of mine, I know he has a long way to go home, and he's got 10 people here tonight.
Well, before you ask for suspension, are you asking for us to take it out of order?
Take it out of order, yes.
I would be glad to take it out of order. Moving forward on the agenda, we're going to jump counselors to 155-15, resolution regarding restoration of flag of Israel to our community, as outlined in the enclosed resolution. Counselor Bean.
Mr. President, I would ask for suspension of rules and ask that the resolution, if it is granted, that a copy be sent to the Park Department. I believe the Park Department's the one who's not submitting the flag.
First, the first is we're dealing with suspension.
Sure. I was just going to give you the...
I have a motion for suspension.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for suspension of the rules on 155-15. Speaking to the motion, Counselor...
Why do we need suspension?
It's the first time on the agenda.
We don't just pass a resolution that's on the agenda?
Well, usually resolutions, Counselor, are submitted by a counselor.
Okay.
This is an outside source, so it would be, should be referred to some, someplace with a committee to discuss it. Counselor Bean is asking us to act on it tonight.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second for suspension on 155-15. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed? 155-15 is before you.
Will the resolution be adopted and a copy sent to the Park Department?
Second.
We have a motion, second, to adopt 155-15. Speaking to the motion, I'd like to just say that I will vote for this, but I would like this council to go beyond this resolution and ask the city, whether it's the Park Department, or through the mayor's office, or somebody, to actually come up...